Good evening. My name is Terran Soy. Welcome to the Board of Fire Commissioners Newcastle, Fire District Number One, Work Session for the Budget. Today's Thursday, September 9th, 2021. It is approximately 6:00 P.M. and we're located at 491 King Street in Chaplain, New York. I'll call a meeting to order now. Could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Chief, would you lead us tonight, please?
My pleasure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence as we approach Saturday's 20th Anniversary of September 11th. Thank you. Thank you all. Welcome. All Commissioners are in attendance. That's awesome. Statement regarding public comment. We're going to put and maintain public comment at the end of the meeting should anyone come in. And having said that, I'm going to turn it over to our Secretary and Treasurer, Robin Rizzo.
Yes, so good evening. So today we're going to talk about our budget and allocate our expenditures according to our codes. So first off, we had $1,460,007 in expenditures in our budget for the current year, 2021. Our allowable budget in expenditures for 2022 is $1,495,25, which gives us a $35,008 swing in allowable expenditures. So not a big number to talk about, but it's more about allocating the expenditures in the right codes. So if we can, I think we'll go down the line items of expenditures. And our first would be LOSAP. We've had expenditures this year of $122,000. We had a higher budget because last year we had a second payment. So we need to decide what a reasonable budget would be there or move on.
Should be noted that LOSAP is our largest single expense. Can I say anything?
Last time I looked at it, at what was being paid, we were 79% funded. So I'm wondering if that number is big enough. It's a huge drop.
Because, yeah, we had budgeted $180,000, which was a huge increase. In 2020, we increased that line based on an additional payment. I believe it was $30,000, Chris, that we paid in addition in 2020.
Okay.
And then we did not pay it in this coming, in '21.
So we budgeted $180,000, we paid thus far $122,000. But don't we pay that in an annual lump sum? We didn't make one payment a year?
Yes, and I believe though there's a little bit of an admin fee at another point. But we also reduced the budget from $180,000 to $162,000. This year, we took funds and put it into another account, probably our contractual account. So, yeah, if we look at...
So, Chris, if I may, just for your information, we do have on the agenda for tonight to talk about increasing LOSAP contributions and extending the year. However, if that does impact what we might want to budget for next year, just keep that in mind, that we will be talking about that, at least briefly tonight, anyway.
I would suggest that $122,000 is not enough.
Okay.
Total insurance premiums, as per the time, were $121,000. LOSAP.
Is what the difference between $162,000 and $122,000?
Here's the issue. If the recommendation is we are less than 79% funded on LOSAP, when somebody retires, we no longer pay them out of mutual. We don't actually write the check every month. We then purchase an annuity. Annuities are very expensive, especially with low interest rates because you're not growing as fast as they would. So I think it's advantageous to the district to be able to simply pay out of our fund rather than purchasing an annuity very party. Now, LOSAP benefits are generally speaking 10 years certain for life, which means we have to guarantee payments for two years even if the retired member is deceased after five. But then again, some members are not deceased for, you know, 20 years after their benefits and in which case that has to be fully funded. I like points, it's $122,000. Feels like cutting it a bit close to the bone.
What do you suggest?
Well, I mean, if last year the board thought that $180,000 was too much, well, we revised it down to $162,000 with transfers. Maybe $162,000 and see what happens next year. Since we felt comfortable taking that money, that $62,000 to $72,000, what, the $18,000 out?
Sure, I mean, I'll put it in and then...
Right, and these are not reserve funds, so we can move money when we need to, so...
Yes, yes.
Next item.
So our next is, Chris, you're up, again, workers' compensation. So you'll notice that our budget in '21 was $67,000. However, we are paid in full with our premiums. We've had audits and they've been issuing us refunds. We can do it very well with the insurance. So I had just plugged in a $50,000, but obviously this is yours.
Right, we had a huge reduction in workman's comp. Brian, do you remember when Jerry got the census redone? When we get audited, in my understanding is we get, we have an audit on an annual basis. We look at the population, they adjust it, so we're probably comfortable with whatever. Is that an annual payment or is it installment payment?
I paid it annually this year because we said it wasn't worth doing the installments on a monthly basis.
So, I mean, we have the money. So this year, all this day one was $43,305?
Correct, and last year it was $56,000.
$56,000, okay. So the most we'd have to go into pocket over the proposed budget would be $6,000, we hope.
So do you want to make it $55,000?
No, I'm comfortable with $6,000.
With $50,000, okay.
I think $50,000 is fine.
You go. Next, Robin.
We have life insurance and cancer insurance?
Me again. Well, this is a tricky one. It was expressed to me that perhaps because LOSAP, and this is going to our regular meeting agenda, you know, because LOSAP, many people don't get there. You have high school students that join, they go off to college, they never make their 50 points for five years, and so, you know, they're not getting that LOSAP benefit. So the question is whether or not it would make sense to increase the cancer benefit, which, you know, well, for firefighters who give us five years and then retire, they would still be entitled to that benefit. Right now, the statute requires a minimum of $25,000 based on one cancer event and $6,250 based on a second event. It's also 36 months of $1,500 a month payments for people that are out of work. That's separate and part of workman's comp. We can, the combined benefit of the $25,000 to the $62,500, I believe, gets us to, somebody knows math, $31,250. We can pay a maximum of up to $50,000. Now, since I emailed to Diane over a guy and to ask her what it would cost to up that to the next, which may or may not be of more benefit to the members. Paul, I don't know if you'd want to weigh in on that.
I mean, it's definitely a reality that we're all facing, particularly as the membership, the younger membership is getting older. And what we're seeing and hearing with the prevalence of, you know, cancer and all of that, I mean, selfishly, yeah, great idea.
Okay, so, I mean, why don't we keep it where it is for now, which is the bare minimum? But when I get information back from Diane, I'll report to the board. We can decide if we want to adjust it. It's not going to be, it can't be that much money because we're only looking at going up about $19,000, $18,000 per member. So that's my only comment on that.
So you want to keep it at 20, you want it...
I think 21 is what I put in there because it might have increased a little from last year.
I think it's...
The actual...
Yeah, why don't we leave it for now?
Leaving it at 21, the recommended?
And I'll see what the increase would be. This is our first of two work sessions, right?
One, and then we adopt in two weeks.
So we'll have the public meeting, then we can revisit it then?
Yeah, well, sure.
On the day we adopt it, we can discuss prior to?
Yes, we can. We can have discussion all night long during that meeting. Thanks, Chris. Dispersment, just please tell everyone watching tonight what the 2% dispersment is, please.
So we get funds in from New York State Insurance, and it's an in and an out for us. We don't even call it a revenue. It's just an into the fund and then out to our three companies split up by their population and service points?
Yeah, that's the formula, right.
Thank you.
And this year it was around $62,000 that we received. So next is contractual expenditures.
Oh, let's, employee compensation first, let's go over that line, please.
So we no longer have employee compensation or social security because I am the only person working right now.
And 1099 is contract.
Right.
Gotcha. Forgive me, sorry about that.
That's okay, but that is because it was in last year.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
So contractual expenditures are, so what we have under contractual is number one, our insurance, taxes that we pay to the town, which are district taxes, sewer taxes, that kind of thing. That's one of the items in there. The salary for the secretary and the treasurer.
I'm sorry to interrupt, when you say taxes, we paid it to the town, what taxes do we pay to the town?
So just the district taxes, it's not, it's not school, it's district taxes, county, county district, like sewer.
Water and sewer.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because that does not include hydrants, right?
Sorry?
That does not include the hydrant fees?
No, no.
That's separate, that's a separate line.
Yeah, so I'm trying to think of what else is in there.
Weren't we using contractual expenses for some of our A&E, architect engineering expenses and other?
Well, one of the items we have in contractual, you'd be able to speak to Chief, is tracking for 50 people. So it, I mean, $4,463, so we must decide a contract for the... Is it for LOSAP tracking? $4,463, let me see which vendor that was. In February, we paid...
Is that what the...
What was a new product this year in this budget? I'm sorry, I don't have the, I'll have to research.
It's okay, we can come back to that line at our next meeting if you wish, that's fine.
Right, so that's in there, and I was going to put that in there again. And I read the lower post office box, things like that. And also we have Oakland here. Not Oakland, I almost forgot, Oakland, I'm sorry. I'm blank.
Arts Row?
Our... Sorry?
The consultants.
Yes, the consultant.
So we have, so we have...
Headline.
Headline, Wise Oak.
That's Wise Oak Strategies. What about our architectural and engineering fees that we pay out on occasion? What line is that on?
So I believe they're under professional services.
Okay, got it. Okay, so continue then. I'm sorry for interrupting.
So that's contractual expenditures. We had a budget in there of 50, we have since increased it to 75. We are at 73. I think that line has to be increased.
It does.
Definitely does. I mean, I think we should go back, we were at 97 the prior year.
And I came at almost that, I think so.
Correct.
I would recommend increasing that line because there will be a need to increase contractual services and expenses with respect to any future plan regarding and relating to the consolidation and monetization plan. Having said that, I'll just throw it out there. Maybe a number of, it was previously at $97,000 for budget year 2020. I would say $100,000 for 2022.
That sounds like a good starting point. And that includes the landscaping, that includes the snowplow, and that includes...
No, that's all under his building zone. So then Terry had suggested that we create a new line, so I just put it in my spreadsheet, I'm sorry, just under the 8202 as the architect and the engineering code, which will separate out for the coming year because of our projects.
I think that would be helpful for us to see. And we can also separate out Lynn, who's also working on many of our engineering and architectural issues. So we could have those three in there and we can closely track exactly how much money we're spending in that regard. That's just a suggestion, open for discussion. We don't have to answer it tonight, it's just something to think about before we meet next time to adopt the budget.
Let me ask you a question. Do these numbers mean anything?
No, they were in the system and the numbers don't, it's the, your numbers mean something. The pension and the employee services, but they all fall...
But 8202, we used to have 20, we added the line item for $495,000, but other than that, we had 25 items. So someone has just picked this up, or picked this out a little bit, right?
Yeah, well, we, when I took the system over, we had these type codes. We've since organized them, so they all collapse into state code.
Oh, right.
But we separate them out because each one seems to be something we need to talk about.
Okay, so if we go $100,000?
For our architect, engineer, and building attorney?
No, I was talking about just 8202, I'm just talking contractual expenses. Did we agree on that?
Wait, though, it was a good idea.
$100,000, I'm second to Terry, just above.
Vehicle purchase.
So we're adding a line for Joe, Bob, and Lynn, right?
I'll try and make it 8203, but we'll see what's available.
And are we going to budget that line?
Yeah, I think we, you know, shorted ourselves this year.
I think we should because we're going to be spending money this year, no doubt, as we're moving forward with consolidation and monetization.
Yeah, but according to what I got from Paul, for 2021, he's talking about $35,500. In other words, pre-bond referendum expenses.
Right.
Post-bond referendum expenses, $20,070,080.
Well, not on total on engineering and architecture?
Yes.
Okay, but that's post-bond, which is part of the bond.
Correct.
Yeah, so the number just popped in my head then. So if we went 35 times three, it's going to give us what? It's going to give us $105,000 for architectural engineering and attorney's fees relating to...
$495,000.
Say again?
$495,000. But do you have, do you have the 2016 budget? No?
I can get it, I can get it.
Yeah, I mean, there's no way we're going to spend that much money. 2016 would give us the outside number.
So we're just talking basic numbers here, right? So should we revisit this one in two weeks and get closer numbers?
But here's my thought. When this was done in the first go-round, there was an awful lot of money spent on architects, bond counsel, Lynn, Joe, engineering, flow tests, traffic analysis, all that sort of thing. I don't think we're going to get close to that number this year.
I agree, no, the work is already done.
But that would give us the outside number of, you know, what it could possibly cause.
Right.
And then maybe be able to establish, you know, throw the dart a little closer to the center of the board on what we need for this year. Just a thought. But this is an annual budget, it runs by the calendar year, right?
Yeah.
Chris, did that number include course for construction manager, do you know?
It did not, that's in the document that you're holding.
Yeah, that's like another half million.
Yeah, this is, yeah, no, no, this is, no, it's got nothing to do with that. This is all money that we just paid out of pocket to get these, not to get the draw, to do all the tests, to get the approval from the town. And that was a lot, that was a lot of man hours, it was crazy. It had nothing to do with the construction. So for the sake of time, I think I understand some of the issues we've got to answer. I'll, can I circle back with you and Ed and we'll come to that, that number we're looking for for the A&E and council, whatever it is, it may not be $105,000. It could be 60, it could be 40, we don't know yet.
$100,000?
Yeah, it could be, it could be more. Can we circle back on that before the budget meeting of two weeks? So we agree we're going to establish a separate line item, we've got to figure out what the number is going to be.
Yes, okay.
Excellent.
Okay, our next line I created this year for the vehicle purchase because we were creating, we were purchasing one using budgeted funds. We did not go into our reserve. And we encumbered the funds from 2020 and brought them in because we had a purchase, legal purchase. And then we had to cancel the purchase, we had to void the check, so...
I recommend that we roll that forward and add a couple thousand dollars to it. Let's just say $60,000.
Is that for utility?
Yes, sir.
And it comes out of trucks?
No, but it's separate, it's a separate...
Utility is a truck, fire, is considered one of trucks. This year, I think it's cars.
This is the old one that we, I've been, I'm not saying the old one. This is the one we were supposed to purchase.
And we had it up, returning.
Yeah, yeah.
So what we're saying is we're going to roll those funds forward. You see the line item, Brian, vehicle purchase? We're going to roll it forward and bring it up to 60.
So I'm not going to put 60 in that line, I am going to put the difference between 60 and 56, too, because that's coming over, okay?
Gotcha, thank you for that.
Yeah, and Brian, I don't see a line item of trucks. I see a reserve fund for trucks, but I don't see...
That's the reserve.
I don't see a purchasing line.
Yeah, we weren't talking about that.
Well, that's where the truck money comes out.
Gotcha.
Except for apparently last year it was budgeted in the regular budget, it wasn't put into the reserve fund, is what I understand.
Yes. Okay, next line item, please.
$3,800 in there, right? Okay, so our budget, capital reserve budgeted, the three lines that you see there, we do not address those until we've gone through our expenditures and then we go back and look at those. So for now, we're just going to leave it.
All right, so we're just going to, one, two, three items, got it.
And next we have chief's operating expense, which Russell, our chief, did talk to me and say he had another at least $3,000 plus expenditures that he expected to be coming up soon. So even though he's only spent $3,200 to date, he definitely expects to spend more in this current year, okay.
Okay, so having said that, we expect, we expect that the chief is going to spend how much more above $3,200?
He said he had at least $3,000 coming up right away.
I would say we're probably, for this year, probably between five and seven. But I think for next year, because again, with COVID restrictions being lifted, we'll be back toward, you know, full drill schedule and training schedule and that's where some of the consumables come out of, you know, for water, for something after, to eat after the drill, things like that. So I think keeping it for 10 for next year...
Well, I'm going to do some, let me do some quick math. So we're at 32 now, you're expecting how much by the end of this year, about?
I'd say double it for the rest of this year.
Okay, so now we're at 64, and the chief's staff would be comfortable with $10,000 for next year?
Yeah.
I make a recommendation that we fund that line to $10,000.
A second?
$10,000, please.
Okay, got it.
Thanks, chief. And chief, you are welcome to stay, but I know you're preparing for drill. So you can either stay or...
I'll bolt a few minutes before seven, maybe, so thank you.
And then as soon as we start...
I'll hop back in to hit on the chief's report because there's a couple of things that I need to speak to rather than just give you the...
Sure.
I mean, if you wanted, we could skip around to his, like, he has lines that he also might want to talk about, like the inspection and the medical expenditures.
Yeah, let's do that. Let's get, let's now hit all the lines for the chief so he can leave. Does anyone object to that? Sure, good, excellent. Thanks, Rob.
So we have dues, conventions, and training, which, we had a $30,000 budget this year. And I did speak to the chief, and you can let me know if I have this right, and he said that it also included a large number for prevention.
Correct.
And we didn't have any of those.
Yeah, so what we include in that category is the fire prevention and, so, fire prevention and membership and that, and that's the, in addition to... Give me a second, because our title, our category titles are different than yours. So yes, I've got $12,000 for fire prevention and membership. Robert, what else did you? Oh, and the memberships and dues. We've got $1,500 in the various associations that we're a part of, you know, the Northern Fire Chiefs, Mount Pleasant Fire Chiefs, those different organizations.
And that also includes our memberships as well?
And these?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Robert, does that include the refreshments, as I'm calling, which we run for meetings, standbys, the different association meetings or...
It's charged to the chief's operating.
Okay, so that's not, so that's in that category?
So chief, I think what we saw here was there was an initiative to put more money into training and traveling and seminars, et cetera. We did not use it this year clearly. So I wouldn't, and this is just me talking now, I wouldn't be opposed to keeping it where it is now and revisiting it later.
No, I agree, I was just looking to try to, because again, we've got it broken out by what it actually is, so I'm trying to fit it into the category, that's why I'm trying to do some mental math.
Yeah, we just weren't able to, with the restrictions this year.
With the training and everything, Paul, I mean, are we, I mean, if you had tripled what we've spent, it would get you to, what, around $15,000? That's double what we budgeted.
Yeah, half of what we budgeted.
With the understanding that we can always reload that line if we have to take resources from elsewhere.
And we can subtract from that line if it's not used as well.
Except for depending on the chief's staff, they may not want people dipping into their budget. I think it's easier for the board to give more than try to take away.
No, I don't think we take it from the chiefs. I think they just keep it there.
No, we take it from the line, though.
Well, no, we take it, we can just transfer out of the line. So you know what, you're making a really good observation, we'll always split the difference between the two.
Yeah, could you, you live with 15? And then with the understanding that if there's more training and more whatever required, we can refund that?
Make it 15, and with the caveat, we will always defer to the chiefs for recommendations on the resources they need for training and education.
We are going to provide training, no question.
Absolutely.
Medical expenditures, I think, would be the next one, the 8210?
Yeah, and that's the invoice or the contract that you guys signed with Interstate for the annual physicals. I believe it went up this year because we're doing a second physical to get, to change the cycle that we're on because usually you have to have it annually. So next year, we should go back to the half or what it was in 2021.
So we did it in spring this year, but we want to move it to October?
Correct, so we have to have everybody in October.
And there was a reason for that, I forgot what it was.
Because we can get flu shots, and now we're actually hoping to be able to administer a COVID booster if it's available at that time.
That's awesome.
That makes sense.
Being able to combine everything in one and get everyone on that same cycle.
So I see, Robin, projected there at $20,000, I think that's a pretty decent number.
What, $20,000?
It's medical expenditures.
8210.
Eight, yeah, 8210.
It was 20 the prior, prior year, and then we added 10. Yeah, we added the 10 in.
But we've only spent 20, right?
We've only had the one physical to date.
Yeah, I think we can leave it.
So we'll leave it at 20?
Yeah, leave it at 20.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Next one is a big question mark, I think we might want to come back to it.
Which one is it?
Oh, no, that's not the one that we're talking about with the chief. Is there anything else, chief? Oh, turnout here?
Well, turnout here, yeah, I mean, that I double-checked. The 50 is a good figure because we've got here that's coming up for expiration next year, that'll need to be replaced.
Did we replace any of this past year?
Yeah, we did replace...
I never saw any, I never saw any invoices on it. I just want to get a little more involved in that this year.
Sure.
I just need to get smarter on it, this one.
No worries, thank you.
And you have plans to spend some between now and December 31st?
Yeah, we will get, because there's a few people, a couple of the kids who were away at school, we're going to try to get them fitted when they come in for their physicals and kind of hit everything in one shot.
Go up one to inspection.
Okay, so we're going to, so in that one... Okay, so we're going to, so isn't that one even the 50 again?
Yes.
Wait.
That was turnout gear.
Where is it? What line? I'm sorry.
8225.
Oh, second page, turnout gear. I'm good with that. And then we have another one in there for the chief, inspection. It's right above medical expenditure.
Okay, you're right, I missed that.
That's right.
And for that, you know, we are planning on, you know, hopefully in the state of the world, we're going to be able to get back to inspection for this coming May as we traditionally have done. But I would imagine that's a carryover item because it was budgeted for, we didn't use it this year. So just the new budget item would be the $2,500 difference between previous year and 23.
I would say bring it to 25. I agree. Put it to 25,000 with no objection from the board.
Right, and the 23,500 drops to fund balance if we don't use it.
10,000 to 15, 100, yeah.
So is that what we're saying, 20, 23,000?
Yeah, put it to 25 with no objection.
So there's no event this year, is what you're saying?
There was no event in 2021. We are shooting for 2022.
That'd be awesome.
My essential...
Yeah, yeah, I saw.
Wait, are we adding, we're not adding a budget line, we're carrying over the 23,000?
No, you can't carry it over. We will just have it drop to fund balance, or you can use it towards another budget this year. His old budget this year.
Okay, so the $23,000 we did not spend in May of 2021 is going to go where?
Fund balance, unless we transfer it to another line because we have a need for expenditures, you know.
But why can't we trans...
You can't encumber it. You have to have a vendor, you have to have a purchase. We don't have that.
Or it goes to capital reserve. That's whatever likes your money play.
Also, the difference is you split, you break up all the...
For the sake...
And we've already got a purchase order, we've already...
Just for the sake of everyone listening at home, just don't balk over and whatnot. So this is interesting, and we all need to know how this works. One more time on the mechanics of what we're doing right now. We did not use $23,500 last year. Where are those funds now going to go?
They're going to drop to fund balance. And/or if we, at the end of the year, need to transfer around, we use that fund to transfer money around for something else.
I guess my question is, last year, the board asked the taxpayers for $23,000, which was not spent. And so that's going to go into a fund balance. Why are we asking them for an additional $23,000 this year instead of using the money they did last year?
Then you would have to, you would have to say you're going to under, you're going to, you would have to use fund balance.
So, and this is my point, and we just got to the point I was trying to make for the residents listening in. We can, out of fund balance, pay for the inspection. Yes or no?
It's a little out of the ordinary because it's only a $23,000 line. Last year, we had a $21,000 line that dropped to fund balance. Or we in turn use that fund to help purchase the vehicle because we purchased the vehicle out of our operating. So it's not something you would normally say we're going to use fund balance to pay for an inspection dinner either.
So having said that, let's defer this. We'll make sense of it before the budget meeting. We'll have an answer to report back with no objection. And if we could, first of all, don't worry about the inspection.
There's going to be inspection.
Yeah, there's going to be an inspection.
I stand on the balcony myself and sink.
Yes, so let's go to another item for the chief.
Uniforms.
Uniforms, because we've got to get the chief out of here.
I'm thinking uniforms, we could probably drop down to 3,000. Because in that category, would I be able to use that for, we've got a closet of older uniforms that are in desperate need of being, you know, cleaned properly, but is that the type of line item? I could send those out and charge it against that.
Absolutely, care and maintenance, absolutely.
Definitely, so maybe if we could, you know, drop, keep it 4,000, because I don't know how much they'll charge us to clean 30 uniforms. And then we can get them all squared away for repurposing.
Could you do that this year? Because this year, you've only spent 1,000 out of 5.
That'd be a great idea. Do it this, do it this year, and we'll budget for, for next year.
Worth your money.
Is that fair?
And the shirts done, too?
And it's also any type of uniform that's allowed for a commissioner.
Right.
Is in that line also.
That's, no. Anything else for the chief, because he needs to run? Anything else, Brian, there for the chief?
He walks first, so he really doesn't run.
Anything else you have on that that we missed?
New equipment, oh, about $18,000. I don't know where that fits within your, we've got some very specific items that we'll, you know, we'd love to purchase next year. Saws, air oxygen tanks for the, when we change our response to these echo levels to help out C-Vac. Stop, step chalking for being a blitzfire nozzle. Rescue system, specific piece of rescue equipment for helping out, getting people out of very confined spaces.
Quick question, Ryan, where are these purchases being made last time, specialty?
What did you guys spend? Gave them that amount of money?
Repair and maintenance equipment.
Well, that's not repair and maintenance, that's, if we could, we could say purchase, repair, and maintenance of equipment.
Yeah, all three of those are really purchasing as well.
Yeah, I think that's where the line item may be, but more properly, that should probably say purchase, repairs, and maintenance of equipment.
Yep.
Same thing with, we can't say purchase of trucks, it's separate.
Do we get another line item?
No, I don't think so.
No, because it just gets, they were, state was really surprised at how many lines we had to be in with.
Right.
But even purchases are for the buildings, you know, we throw purchases in there.
I got you, so...
Repairs and maintenance equipment.
All right, so chief, just to give you an idea, last year's specialty, let's just say repairs and maintenance of equipment, was only 24,000, and we've got 90 budgeted, so...
Yeah, but I don't think that category is all the chief's. So like, for instance, I'm pretty sure everything that the chief has wanted to purchase, he has purchased. But is in that category also budgeted items for other repairs and maintenance that may be done outside of us?
Can we circle back to that one as well?
Good, trucks? I don't know.
No, but when we put in the new boiler, when we did...
And came out of house and out of cap reserve.
And the oil tie?
Hose testing is in that for 6,000.
Okay, so hose testing, the ladder testing, I'm assuming would be included in that as well?
Fire tech rope.
Okay.
That's in there for 7,500. Just looking for your big...
Okay, I'm actually looking at you, so for instance, is anything on there, RIT bailout system? Or air bottle testing, air pack testing?
Okay, for the sake of time, for the sake of time, Robin's going to just check quickly, and then we'll come back to that one. But it looks like that specialty equipment is under that line.
Yeah, and actually, as I'm looking, we've got a category that we're calling maintenance, replacement, and testing. Within that category, we've got things such as replacing fire ground radios, upgrade to the Red Alert software, SCBA bottles, desktop computer, RIT bailout system, hose replacements after stuff, you know, and that's 8,500 bucks in and of itself. Pump testing, RIT harnesses, that's the bailout systems. Survivor life replacement, personal service plan. So I'm thinking that that 90,000 category encompasses all this, so that would be keeping it the same. You know, it's been consistent for the last couple of years, so I don't see a need to change it.
So since...
Well, the computer stuff would come out of the computer technology, our line.
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay, but I mean, by comparison, that's what he wrote down as a line item for that on here is minimal compared to, you know, some of these other, and also within that, maintenance, replacement, and testing, we've got the grant money because anytime we apply for a grant, we have to be able to put up a percentage of the total grant that's allocated. So for the three types of grants that we usually apply for, that would give us the, are what we're required to put up. I don't want to say good faith, but the amount that, I think we have to put up 5% of any grant that's awarded to us.
The 90 was up $20,000 from 2020.
I would...
Because the other thing is the radios and all that comes out of communications.
So the other thing I would like to say is, it's what you'd like to see, but you have to get it approved at a meeting, and you have to have a purchase order signed by a commissioner. So even if you did budget more, it still has to be approved at any...
Correct, because I have 18,000 for new equipment, new things that we want to purchase, and 84,000, what we're calling maintenance, replacement, and testing.
This one...
And that, excuse me, that there, we'd have to break down and put it in these lines.
Yeah, so there are some things that can come out of your list. I will make an observation that I believe that year-to-date right now is probably artificially low because we didn't do a whole lot of business this year, if you understand what I'm trying to say there. So I would suggest leaving it at 90. Would everyone concur with that, or no?
Makes sense.
I think we're going to be doing more business this year, more purchases this year. I mean, in the coming year, 2020, what we did this year, we may do next year. Yes. Just an observation from here. So we were just on this, we just happened to be on this line item now. But chief, I know you have to go. If you've hit everything...
Yeah, just double-check the one line item we didn't discuss specifically, but I think maybe somewhere in another category is training and training materials, like when we take training classes out of state, or like we had the two members who took the EMT course to get certified.
That's not under 8205?
Yeah, we talked about that before.
Yeah.
Got you, dues, convention, and training.
Yeah, we got plenty, we've got plenty, yes.
So we're at 90,000, I 8216, right?
Yes, that's what I'm suggesting, if there's no objection.
Okay.
Chief, if you're good, go do your drill.
And don't worry about the cars. I will use that end of the parking lot, just block this off. If somebody needs to leave while we're out there, we'll get them out of the parking lot safely, and I'll pop back in after the start of the regular meeting to give you the chief's report.
You got it, and we'll get you right up and out.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. All right, so if we could, Robin, for the sake of time, jump right back to the next one, just 8204, and we'll run right through it, because we have another meeting coming up here at 7:00 PM.
So we have computer technology. We had a $20,000 budget this year, but we actually transferred money into it because of the two server purchases. And we knew that we would need that. Oh, this is your baby, right?
Yeah.
This is your line. Go ahead.
So it's, we've already paid for the servants, right? Paid Manny for his effort?
Minimal likely left, but most of it is paid.
So, and it's on the communication that, from the web server, that it's still a charge of 50 dollars, I think?
I didn't see that email. I knew that 882 seemed high because we're going to keep our mail...
Which is not much.
We're in the middle of our budgeting.
Oh, you're even just at my favorite income. Okay. It is what it is, right.
So...
So we had 16 the prior year, 20 this year. What do you think, Ed?
Can I make a recommendation? Because we did have a discussion with Manny. We should have at least 10,000 in there. The reason why is we have to concern ourselves with regular maintenance, service calls, software updates, and things of that nature. Remember that conversation we had, Robin? So I think...
I want to stay with the 20. I want to stay with the 20 that was budgeted.
That's fine. I'm just saying the bare minimum that Manny talked about in terms of maintenance of the enterprise, if you will, of the computer and IT enterprise, would be a minimum of 10K a year. So having said that, maybe 20 is the number.
Maybe 20 is better.
Well, this is what I was trying to say is, oh, you just mentioned radios, computers, and all that. So, I mean, what damage the computers would go into this line item, so...
I already received his budget paperwork, but last year we did receive it, and we were able to incorporate it in line?
That's what I mean, you have, like, the radios, we have to incorporate that.
But we'll see what we stand in then.
Right, we have another two solid weeks to work on this.
Okay, okay, so we put 20 in...
I would agree with Ed, 20, and Chris as well. Any objection on that one? 20? Next item, please.
So I think we're down to 8212, which is insurance, umbrella vehicles prime. 51,020, we've budgeted 56 this year.
Okay.
We spent 50, and we're done. We're done for our year, so...
And I see that you have a note that you would like to increase to 52?
I figured there's going to be some type of percentage increase.
So...
Do you think 52, 55 would be...
Are you comfortable with 52? Oh, Chris, what do you think?
Yeah, I'm just looking at it. I did get a number on the increase, it's 4%, but whatever it was.
And I do have a question about insurance since we're on it. Do we have any insurance on our equipment, our trucks?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, insurance first on the truck before we possibly go for state-provided disaster money for repair.
And he has been insured.
And always insurance, always insurance first.
No, no, we have, I mean, I can read it, unless it's changed, I can read it to you, but we have like a million dollar cover.
No, that's fine, good. That's good news, actually, of course. Insurance first.
52, and then if you find that it's more, of course, you come back to us?
All right, where are we at, Robin?
So postage, stationary miscellaneous, it's, it wasn't $4,000 line, you know, we just put odds and ends in there?
Yeah, I would keep it and maybe consider 5,000. We will be doing mailings sometime after the beginning, and mailings are costly.
5,000 then?
Five?
Okay. Professional fees. 8214.
Now, how much of those professional fees are going to be in our new line, and how many are staying there?
So our order is in here, is in professional fees. Background checks are in there, foils, tax certs.
So Joe, Bob, and Lynn are not in here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Legal notices are in here, open to Rossi is in here.
I keep it. Keep it at...
I keep it at 37? 37?
It's only 5,000 up from 2020.
Time check. We're permitted to go over on this meeting and then just start the next meeting late? Yes?
Yes.
Repair and maintenance trucks, that's white, we spent...
So for 37, 37,9?
That's year-to-date.
Right, right, right. So I think 70 is probably a good number because we're, you know, as trucks age, things break. And we've had several break unexpectedly.
I agree. And we already did 8216?
90, so that I have.
Yes, got it, check.
And then we have, oops.
Next one is...
Next we have house buildings.
I'd leave it at the 110.
I would highly agree with that one because I think that we may see something in the future here with respect to an item we have on the agenda to talk about tonight.
Communications, radio repairs. So we have a, we had a $40,000 budget in '20, and we spent only 20,000. We had a $50,000 budget, and we've spent 18, but we have another 18 outstanding.
Plus six, right? Or 10?
This is your line, too, so...
Yes, so it's another 18 plus another 10.
The 10 I spent, the 10 I already included in there.
That's in here?
Yes.
So we have 18 more.
Don't we have a new Trump line system coming out?
Yes.
That's because it's my line.
No, the radios that the county gives us are not costing us anything. They pay for the installation as well. The thing that we had to do was buy three brand-new radios to outfit trucks that were not included in what the county was paying for. So we bought three radios, total 18.
We already did, so that's okay.
And we bought, and as Robin says, we also put some pagers in there. We bought 30 new pagers that the chief is actually testing out right now for the new system. It's not going to go live right away, but he wanted to get them before everybody rushed it together.
But that, and that's why we added another $9,800 to the budget by transfers. So do we still, do we still need 50, or can we...
Let me just clarify that, I'm sorry. The 9,800 is the communication pieces that go into the new utility that were encumbered and came over from the prior year.
Oh, that's...
Which we took back.
For lights and silencers.
No.
Just the radios.
We spent the 9,000, we just took back the truck.
No, no, but we, the 9,000 dollars we put into the truck, we took out before we returned it, correct?
Oh, no, no, it was never installed. It will be installed in the new truck.
Oh, we have, okay. We have, okay.
Yeah, the work is paid for, yes.
So what do you?
So it's really a $50,000 budget.
I think 50 may be too much, but if we left it there, we can always change.
It was 40 the prior year.
Yeah.
I see no problem with it.
I'd like to leave it at 50, we can always take some money out of it.
Any objections to 50? Excellent, next item, please.
Water purchases, we're not spending that much money on quarterly water bills to the town, so I said 3,000 should be good as opposed to.
I agree, I agree. Next item would be telephone wireless, and wireless.
So we have four Verizon bills that we pay, and I had figured out the 14,000 would.
Why do we have four bills? Why aren't we paying one if we got, if everything was paid through the district only?
It's just different numbers, Verizon bills are scored different times.
Correct, I remember the answer to that question, it's been asked several times already.
I only have one phone line in my house. I have, if I was to get another, for example, if I was to get another cellular number on my account, wouldn't it come under the same account number? Why would we have?
I think we're commercial separate.
Yeah, well, it wouldn't be the same price for each phone, you would have your master plan, and then.
But why would I get multiple bills?
So we could.
Yeah, you would get one.
Well, we have our wireless for each truck, those, that's one bill, Verizon wireless, and then we have Verizon with the N51 number, which is not a normal number, anyone else could probably.
It is commercial, yeah. Well, in commercial, they break it down, so they send you different bills.
So for the sake, for the sake of time, if you would, gentlemen, if it's not germane to the budget, so we worked, we did budget 16, we spent eight, you want to keep it at 14, I'm good with that.
What do you think? Because we're going to have a new Fios bill, right, now for our new server, and you think?
Yeah, probably should up it somewhat.
Or 15?
Yeah, that sounds good.
15, I agree with 15, any objections to 15?
And are these cell phones, or are these data plants?
Probably both.
So is it to run the computers in the cars and the trucks?
The wireless.
Yeah.
The others are the actual landlines.
So it's not just a phone, because that sounds like a lot of money per phone.
Right.
Or four phones, even.
Next item would be tax refund.
I think that this is not, not a necessary line.
But let's talk about that, is this the tax refund that we received recently?
We received a refund of our funds, a revenue line, this is an expenditure line, if the town has a certain, they settle it, and that parcel is in our district.
Yes.
We might have to give back tax funds.
Right.
But personally, you know, I don't think we've done it. I don't know, we know it's worth a line item for it, you could just transfer from another line if it ever happened.
Can we take this up at the next meeting for the sake of time?
Sure.
Thank you, next item.
Is it known, there are known items, I put them in the debt principal and the debt interest.
Excellent.
Okay, so we'll save it?
Two minutes?
Yeah.
Are you closing this work session?
No, I'm not, at this time, we're concluding our work session of the board, and now is our time for public comment. Anyone here for public comment tonight?
I want to discuss Kisco for that last letter that I just sent to you.
That, tonight, we're talking about?
We can do it anytime, I've got a drill to go to, so I can't do it tonight.
So would it be more convenient than Erica?
Whatever your schedule is, I'll work around it.
So if it would, well, we need to do it during a meeting, during.
I understand, but the question is, if you're going to have some more budgetary meetings, I assume we could possibly do it during one of those.
As long as it's germane to the budget, I don't see why not, right?
Well, it's basically fundamentally the money we're paying them at Kisco.
Yeah, and then your comments would be limited to three minutes, and we're here to listen to your comments and not necessarily comment back on them, we'll consider your comments.
I understand, but I sent you a two-page letter, I don't know whether you've received it, I mailed it this month, supplementing what I sent previously back in March.
We have not received it yet, but all of our official correspondence, we can list on the agenda.
Okay, well, I understand that, I just, but this way, you'll have a chance to read it before the discussion, and we can then have a discussion of it at that particular point when you receive it.
Yeah, I don't know if I'm going to have a discussion with it, what we'll do is we'll listen to your comments, and then the board will then duly consider your comments.
Okay.
Okay?
But I sent a two-page letter further supplementing what I sent back in March.
Excellent.
For some of you, I've been monitoring your discussions, and I dealt with some of the questions that were raised by the board at some of your meetings, and particularly your work session.
What, the work session?
The, the, yeah, the executive session, that you had on Saturday morning, when you were discussing.
That was a work, that was a work session, yeah. And the topic of the Northern Fire Protection Area came up.
Correct, that's what I thought came up.
Yes. So any other public comment for now? Then I would, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Make the motion adjourn.
Second. Fall favor?